Hello and welcome to the Pittsburgh City Council Cablecast Public Hearing for Tuesday, December 17th. My name is Louise Chris and with us today is Sarah Belk, our sign language interpreter. The public hearing will be on the following legislation. Bill 2249, Ordinance Amending the Pittsburgh Code Title IX, Zoning, Article One, Section 902.03, zoning map by changing from CP, Commercial Planned Unit Development, to UNC, Urban Neighborhood Commercial, two parcels and a portion of two parcels in the Allegheny County Block and Lot System Seventh Ward, and changing from LNC, Local Neighborhood Commercial, to UNC, Urban Neighborhood Commercial, six parcels and a portion of two parcels in the Allegheny County Block and Lot System Seventh Ward. Thank you and have a wonderful day.
Welcome to this Cablecast Public Hearing of Pittsburgh City Council for today, Tuesday, December 17th, 2019. I am Councilman Kraus. I'll be chairing this afternoon's public hearing. We are joined by council members O'Connor, Strasburger, Kail Smith, and Burgess. Other members may join us as their schedules permit. Our first order of business, though, will be to read the purpose of our public hearing and then we will have a very brief presentation by Kate Rakis of our Department of City Planning. So, Madam Clerk, can we have the purpose of Bill 2249, please?
Bill 2249, Ordinance Amending the Pittsburgh Code Title IX, Zoning, Article One, Section 902.03, zoning map by changing from CP, Commercial Planned Unit Development, to UNC, Urban Neighborhood Commercial, two parcels and a portion of two parcels in the Allegheny County Block and Lot System Seventh Ward, and changing from LNC, Local Neighborhood Commercial, to UNC, Urban Neighborhood Commercial, six parcel and a portion of two parcels in the Allegheny County Block and Lot System Seventh Ward.
Okay, thank you, Madam Clerk. We are joined by Kate Rakis of the Department of City Planning. And Kate, if you'd do your presentation, please.
Yeah, thank you. So, this legislation is a result of an application on behalf of Shakespeare Streets Associate and joined by the Port Authority of Allegheny County. So, there's two property owners that joined together for this zone change petition. The application is for changing 12 parcels and some of them are only a portion of the parcels. And they are from Commercial Planned Unit Development District CP and Local Neighborhood Commercial LNC to UNC, which is Urban Neighborhood Commercial. All the parcels are near Penn Avenue at Shady Avenue. So, there was action at Planning Commission. They made a unanimous positive recommendation to City Council at their meeting on October 22nd of this year. As of right now, we have no application on file for development on these parcels. As required by the zoning code, a notice was posted around the property and mailed to a budding property owner's 21 days before this hearing today.
Okay, thank you very much. Corey, is there anything that you wish to offer at this time?
Not at this time.
Okay, thank you very much for joining us this afternoon. Thank you, and you can go. Thank you. And we will begin our public comment portion of the public hearing. So, each speaker that has registered will have three minutes in which to address council. We ask that you please, when you come to the podium, give your name and the neighborhood in which you reside for our public record. The green light will indicate the start of your three minutes. When the yellow light comes on, you'll have one minute to summarize your thoughts. When the red light comes on, you must relinquish the podium. Anyone who has not registered and wishes to address City Council at this public hearing will be taken then after our registered speakers. You will be given one minute then to come up and to offer your thoughts and/or comments to council. So, our first registered speaker today is Philip Bishop. And Philip, you will be followed by Peter Rubensky. Forgive me. Philip, are you here?
If I may compress. We are presenting in slightly different order from the list of...
The city clerk. My name is Kevin McKeegan.
If you don't mind, Ms. Brown, I will chair this meeting.
Yes, so do it right.
I'm not having it. I'm not having it. I really want to take the order in which they were registered, if I may, please.
Okay, sure.
Okay? So, Philip, may I have you first and then followed by Peter Rubensky? Thank you very much. Time starts now.
Yes, please.
Good afternoon, happy holidays. Philip Bishop, 560 Epsilon Drive, Pittsburgh, Pennsylvania, representing Shakespeare Street Associates, the owner of the property under question today. Briefly, our Land Use Council will hand out a packet of the presentation that we presented to Planning Commission, going over all of the details that we put together, presenting our petition to both them and you here today to change, as Planning Department said, portions of our property to UNC. While wanting to change this property, one simply has to go out and take a drive-by. It's a circa 1960, 70 era shopping center. It's well in dire need of an upgrade. However, in order to do that, the zoning is prohibitive for many reasons. We also look to other studies that have been done within the community, not just our own desires. I reference, as I did in the Planning Commission, the 2008 East Liberty ELDI planning study that was commissioned, referencing quality urban street face development on this specific property. I also referenced an ELDI community plan in 2010, which encouraged development along the street edge. There is also a TRID study commissioned by the City of Pittsburgh Planning Commission, which envisioned mixed use for this site. Now, understanding that the mixed use and all the details that go into that will be in future hearings in front of the ZBA and the Planning Commission, however, today is the first step because the current zoning does not allow for that mixed use, specifically residential use. And then finally, you mentioned the Port Authority, which is a joint applicant with us here today. Port Authority published guidelines after a considerable amount of money was spent on the east busway improvements and upgrades to encourage transit-oriented design and development. Those guidelines specifically look towards what we are proposing there, a mixed use development with both commercial and residential use. We're also cognizant, and I have met with numerous people who are in the audience here today, and will continue to meet with those folks who are concerned about their community as we are. There's a lot of work to be done in the future with the Planning Commission, with the ZBA on specifics, whether it's parking, affordable housing components, et cetera. So, we would ask for your consideration today to change the zoning to allow us to do what all the previous studies had mentioned. Not what we want, albeit it fits within our desires to upgrade the center, which we've owned for a number of years. We feel it's sound zoning, sound planning, and is consistent with the plans that have been done by others, looking at the area as a whole with everything that's going around there. Thank you for your time. Thank you, Philip. Peter, are you with us today?
Yep.
Okay, welcome. You'll be followed by Yvonne Francine Brown. Hi, Peter, welcome.
Hi, thank you. My name is Peter Rubinsky. I live at Village of Shadyside, 100 Denniston, Unit 83. Thank you for the opportunity to address City Council. My wife Ellen and I have been residents of the Village of Shadyside for 18 years. We moved to the East Liberty Shadyside area to be in a walkable urban environment, which had proximity to local retail restaurants and especially public transportation, of which we are frequent users. Of course, we expected that there would be changes to the neighborhood over time, and there have been many positive changes. However, if ugly tall buildings that blocked out light, crushing traffic, and compromised pedestrian safety, all of which will occur if Echo is permitted to move ahead with its development plan for the site, were what we were looking for, we would have chosen some other area of Pittsburgh to live in. Echo is asking for a zoning change so that they can construct a large apartment building and a 492-car garage. Assuming Echo's pending zoning request is approved, and they obtain an exception or variance, I'm not sure what the legal term is, to the maximum 60-foot height allowed by the zoning change, which they have publicly stated they will seek, the hulking 75- or more-foot apartment building will be completely out of character with the surrounding residential neighborhood. The planned 492-car garage makes a mockery of their claim that the project will be a transit-oriented development. Echo Realty's plans for the site, which are contingent on the zoning change being discussed today, will certainly not harmonize with the character of the residential neighborhood around it. I provided via email, City Council, with copies of a petition which supports the redevelopment of the Shakespeare Giant Eagle site, but strongly opposes the site's current development plan as we understand it, which is contingent on rezoning the site from CP to UNC. Please note, there's been one change since the petition was circulated and signed. The issue of permitting entry from and exit to a real estate street is no longer relevant as the developer is indicated. There won't take place. There'll be no entry and exit. The petition has been signed by about 215 residents, many of whom will be directly impacted by the development, as well as residents from surrounding areas who will be indirectly affected. The petition focuses on the expected adverse impacts of the current development plan, including the following, some of which I've already addressed. Traffic, increase in traffic congestion, increase in competition for parking, loss of free parking that Giant Eagle currently provides, which will push people to side streets, compromised pedestrian safety, environmental impacts, increased noise, pollution, air pollution, inadequate green space. The apartment and the garage, excuse me, will loom over the surrounding area and negatively impact the landscape. Urge City Council not to approve the change. Thank you.
Okay, Peter, thank you. Yvonne Francine Brown will be followed by Kevin McKeegan.
Good afternoon. My name is Yvonne F. Brown. Now, we have these signs. Now, on mine, I live in the Hill District, on mine I wrote down, if you go down Crawford Street to Fifth Avenue, near Mercy Hospital, there used to be a Mellon Bank, is closed. But I want you to go cat cornered across the street. They have an apartment for rent, $2,500 a month. Gentification, is that what it is? How can you close the bank, Mellon Bank, but you can charge right across the street $2,500 for an apartment, but you don't have the bank there? You had Mercy Hospital, why would you get rid of the bank? This is all gentification, and I know it is. The reason why I say that is that when we had the park, we had a point, we had a hearing about the transit. We only have one person that was here, that's the president of council. But I live at Kaylee Weaver Irving's tires. And in order to get to Mercy Hospital at the bottom of the hill, we must take two buses. We must go into town and come back out. I'm saying with the same way that these people are saying, they're speaking out because you are gentifying the city of Pittsburgh. Anytime at the bottom of the hill from where I live, you pay $2,500 for an apartment, and the bank is closed. The bank is closed. How is that? If the Port Authority, Mr. Lavelle's not here, if the Port Authority can use, can put Wi-Fi on their buses, and the poor people, we can't even get the bus down to the bottom of the hill. But if you have any kind of device to want to use the Wi-Fi, get on the bus, you can do it. But we can't even ride down to the bottom. I'm 73, and I can walk pretty good.
Ms. Brown, would you please direct your comments to council?
I do have a problem with my feet. If I turn my head, he says something. Tim Stevens turned around and called someone to the front. He didn't say one word. You know what? I'm tired of this. Do you understand? I'm coming down because there's a problem. I'm suffering just like the rest of you. But if I turn my head, or if I make a face, he'll put the sergeant or arm on me. Let me tell you something, Mr. Kraus. I come here to speak out because the law says I can, not you, because you're trying to stop me. But the law says I got three minutes. If I speak during my three minutes and Mrs. Gross takes and starts speaking, and I say something, told me I had to shut up, I could not talk to her like that. Why is she taking my three minutes up? Do you understand? This is nothing but same race, white race discriminating against dark, conflicted people. My time, I still got a minute.
Thank you very much. Your time has expired.
Yeah, yeah. They're gonna get rid of you.
We pride ourselves on, we pride ourselves on having an open and transparent process at this council. We also expect decorum and respect in the chamber as well. There's a process by which these things are done, and we ask everyone that participates to follow that process. Kevin, you're next, and you'll be followed by Louise Hurl.
You should follow your process. Now, just tell us the call.
Thank you, Mr. Kraus.
Thank you, Kevin.
My name is Kevin McKeegan, as Phil indicated, on Land Use Council to Shakespeare Street Associates. I have to give to the clerk for presentation to council, a copy of the presentation that was made to the Planning Commission. First, we do appreciate all the comments and statements that are made today. We do take seriously the public input into this project. It's important to remember that the zone change before you today is not the end of the road. No development plans can be submitted unless this zone change is approved, and our client recognizes that more community engagement and discussion are absolutely needed as part of the process of approving a development plan. That process is going to include both a special exception hearing, lightly a site plan approval from the Planning Commission. We know that to get through those approvals, given the city's processes, that community engagement is important and will have to continue. I do want to emphasize, though, two points that Phil touched on. The first is that in considering a zoning map change of this type, City Council has criteria in the zoning code that they must look to. Those are in the code, I'm not going to read them to you, but there are a couple of points I want to make. First, the CP classification itself is rather an odd duck for this property. Plan commercial in the zoning code really requires a larger site than this, and it requires a site that's not bordered by as many different other zoning districts as there are here. The net result of all that is that under the zoning code, it's impossible at this point to have any sort of unified development of this property under its current zoning classification. Moreover, as Phil indicated, the CP classification does not allow for residential use. So, in other words, if you want a multifamily project next to the busiest transit stop in the city of Pittsburgh, you can't have it here unless the zoning is changed. Secondly, the site itself, as Phil mentioned, is antiquated. It lacks modern stormwater controls. It's got a sea of surface parking between it and the street. None of those things can be adequately addressed under the current zoning. To have a new project, to have one that takes advantage of the transit system that's there, that meets the city's current policies and goals in terms of a strong environmentally sensitive development, a rezoning must occur first. But again, I want to leave you with this thought. We know that today is not the end of the road. We know that further discussion with the community is necessary. We welcome the comments today. We'll be prepared to address them at the appropriate time, and we look forward to your favorable consideration of the zoning amendment. Thank you.
Kevin, thank you. Louise, are you with us? Welcome, please come down. You'll be followed by Celeste Scott. Hi, Louise, welcome.
Hi, thanks. My name's Louise Hurley, and I reside at 100 Denniston Avenue, Number 84, some in the Village of Shadyside. My unit is directly behind the brick wall that is part of the Giant Eagle complex, so would be directly impacted particularly by very high-rise development in that area. First, I'd like to say that I support the development of the property. I do appreciate that Echo Realty has willingness to invest capital in the neighborhood, and I welcome changes to the current site, which is devoid of greenery and, you know, any aesthetic appeal. So, something definitely needs to be done. I appreciate them addressing it. However, I do oppose the change in zoning as requested due to concerns about the overdevelopment and the overcrowding that is occurring in our neighborhood. I've lived there about 15 years. In the last 10 to 12 years, we've been impacted by the addition of several multi-story housing units, Target, Trader Joe's, the Bakery Square Development Complex, and other developments in the area near 6320 Shakespeare. I would ask the City Council to sincerely consider the consequences to the entire neighborhood, homeowners and renters, and not just business owners. Please care about our quality of life and the negative environmental consequences that go along with overdeveloped urban areas. Do not be unduly influenced by a large local corporation who has the legal resources and the wherewithal to squash grassroots resistance and who, rightfully so, has profit as the main motivator. This is an unfair fight, and you're the only one who can make sure that everyone's interests are considered. Community meetings have been offered to provide opportunities for neighborhood feedback and discussion, but have been disappointing in that it hasn't really resulted in honest compromise. Echo is hearing us, but they are not listening. I am not interested in just going through the motions, going to community meetings, going to public hearings, going, looking at bogus traffic studies with the outcome if it's a foregone conclusion. I am interested in honest dialogue, and I have an understanding that none of us should expect to get 100% of what we would like. There's room for compromise. So, I'm asking you to sincerely consider the total picture, not just the money that Echo represents, but the impact to the neighborhood we love, the quality of life that the families that reside there enjoy, and to consider that we also have invested in this neighborhood, something that can change very quickly if you destroy it. Please do not behave as Echo has. Don't just hear what we are saying, listen to what we are saying. Thank you very much for the opportunity.
Thank you, Louise. Appreciate it. Hi, Celeste, you're next, and you'll be followed by Joshua Melroy. Why can't I speak today? Melroy. Hi, Celeste, welcome. Yep, thank you. That's very helpful. Okay?
All right. Good afternoon. My name is Celeste Scott, and I'm the Housing Justice Organizer for Pittsburgh United. First, we would like to thank you for all of the courageous and inclusive votes that you have made this year regarding authentically addressing our housing crisis. With so many indicators of racial and gender inequity in our city, we are asking that we push forward toward solutions centering our most impacted residents, which we know are Black non-men and children. We thank Councilwoman Strasburger for initiating a comprehensive, inclusive effort to make this private development an equitable and impactful development. This particular development is of interest to our coalition because we believe that this development can set the precedent for what equitable, transit-oriented development can look like in the city of Pittsburgh with a focus on affordability, better pedestrian bike infrastructure, and equitably culturally expensive food access. The requested rezoning allows residential units to be built on the site, which creates an opportunity to produce deeply affordable units in an area that has been rapidly gentrifying. We ask that you approve this zoning request, but only pending the acceptance by the development team of the goals set forth by the community. We reached a below affordability consensus with many stakeholders and community partners. As advocates, we are always seeking to amplify and uplift as many voices of impacted people as possible, so we know that this will be an ongoing process as the project gets underway, and we are here to be of assistance on this in future developments. Our specific affordability targets are: total housing affordability at 30% or 70 units, 20% of the units at 50% area median income, that's 46 units, 10% of the units project-based vouchers at 24 units, and at least 40-year affordability. We know that these affordability targets are feasible because the developer, Graystar, the residential developer, is already proposing to set aside 15% of the units at 50% AMI. Tax subsidies, enhanced learning, and grants, the TRID-funded East and Housing Regeneration account are available to offset the cost of providing greater affordability, but the developer has said that they do not intend to apply for these subsidies at this juncture. Whew, sorry, it's been an exhausting day. It's exhausting standing up here and fighting for this stuff. Using project-based vouchers will provide both deeper affordability and more revenue, higher rent limits, they copy rents at 50% AMI. So, today, we are asking that City Council postpone the vote on the requested zoning change pending the good faith negotiation of a community benefits agreement with the impacted constituents of District 8 and District 9. Once the CBA is negotiated, approve the zoning change condition upon approval of a preliminary land development plan by the Planning Commission and City Council. And so, I handed you the zoning code that deals with zone change petitions, and most importantly, the change will not be deemed approved if the city fails to vote in a certain number of days.
Thank you.
So, we look forward to the opportunity to work with you. We have been really creative and intentional in creating a proposed plan, so thank you.
Thank you, Celeste. Thank you, very helpful. Joshua, welcome. You'll be followed by Patricia Norcas. Thanks for being here.
Yes, sir. Hello, everyone. My name is Josh Malloy. I'm the community organizer for Pittsburgh's Republic Transit. We are a grassroots union of transit riders, transit operators, and neighbors who are organizing for transit equity in Allegheny County. We know that marginalized communities are the ones who have the most to lose. They are the ones who need to be, who need to center as leaders as we work for housing, transit, and food justice in our city. I'm here today to talk about Giant Eagle Shakespeare. With this development, we have the chance to reverse legacy of gentrification and displacement in East Liberty and the city of Pittsburgh. We have an opportunity to establish a model of how we build truly transit-oriented development going forward. The Giant Eagle Shakespeare site has some of the best transit service in the entire county. Within walking distance of the site are over 20 bus routes that carry around 53,000 residents a day. The Giant Eagle site is across the street from the east busway, which is the most efficient form of public transit in our system. The east busway is the only form of public transit that pays for itself. It moves more people, it moves more people than many of its counterparts around the nation. It is a model for busways around the country and the envy of many of my colleagues nationwide. It is such a good form of public transit that I spent the past summer working with residents of the Mon Valley and the eastern suburbs to come up with a plan to expand its quality transit into their neighborhoods. What isn't the envy of my colleagues nationwide is the displacement that has happened in the neighborhoods surrounding the east busway, including Shadyside and East Liberty. Neighborhoods have been historically diverse or becoming whiter and richer. At the same time, public and private money that could be spent on keeping these people, these people home is being spent on absurd amount of parking, much of which goes unused. We need housing for people, not for cars. Overbuilding parking in this dense, walkable, transit-rich, amenity-rich neighborhood would be misguided. More car parking will only lead to more driving, more traffic congestion, more expensive rents, more costly products, more pollution, and more dangerous streets. A study completed in the fall of 2018 showed that there are hundreds of newly constructed parking spaces next to the East Liberty Busway Station that go unused. These spaces are within a block of the Giant Eagle site. Why would an entire community pay by trading their personal health, clean air, and quality of life for a new building and overbuilt parking, especially since the city plans on reducing carbon emissions by 30% by 2030, by 50% by 2030? How can you do that by building housing for cars instead of building housing for people, for people who use public transit? In closing, I am here to respectfully ask that City Council postpone the vote on the requested zoning change pending the good faith negotiation of a community benefits agreement with the impacted constituents of District 8 and District 9. We want, we want this to be a model for what equitable, affordable, transit-oriented development can look like, and there's no better opportunity than this site to do that.
Patricia, are you with us? Welcome. You'll be followed by Kenneth Regal.
Hi. I'm Patty Norcas. I live at 6364 Aurelia Street, and I've lived there since 1984. So, I am not totally opposed to the redevelopment of the Shakespeare Giant Eagle area. I am opposed to the height and the density and the size of the structure. So, in 2009, you imploded two buildings in that area to open up the East Liberty area into Shadyside and to get rid of the circle that was an urban development trend of the past that absolutely made that area die. And so, what I'm saying is, by building the structure that they are projecting across the street from the one you imploded, you're doing essentially the same thing. You're closing us off from the East Liberty neighborhood that we have loved living by. It's one of the reasons we moved there. The other thing is, a lot of the homes around that area are not zoned for the UNC, and if they didn't get the UNC, they wouldn't be able to build that tall. I walked through East Liberty yesterday. So I think that is a difficult. Who's to say that this TOD design that everybody's doing all over the nation trend-wise is going to serve us well in 10 years from now? It's hard to say. All these community meetings that we've had, which have not been, in my opinion, sincere in their gathering of information, they have never suggested that they would go for an exception. The first time I heard that they'd go for the exception of additional height was after the presentation to the zoning committee to be able to bring it to here. So what I'm saying is, that feels dishonest to me and deceitful. And if, perhaps if they had said that from the very beginning, there might have been more opposition, but when you don't get all the information, you don't know. The only trends that we in this neighborhood are seeing in terms of urban developers is to ask and tell people that they are going to do a certain thing, and then turn around and do exactly what they want and get granted to make it higher, taller, denser, all that kind of stuff, and I think that's unacceptable. So I am asking that you not grant this UNC zoning to them.
Okay. Thanks, Pat. Appreciate it. Okay, Ken, are you here? You are. Good. Welcome. And you'll be followed by John George. Please, thank you.
Good afternoon, members of council. My name is Ken Regal. I live on Jackson Street in Highland Park, and I serve as the Executive Director of Just Harvest, a center for action against hunger, based at 16 Terminal Way on the South Side. Thirty years ago, before the term "food desert" was even coined, I spoke at a City Council public hearing about the crisis of supermarket closings in our neighborhoods. Among the many neighborhoods affected by these closings back then were Larimer and Homewood, where supermarkets once stood on Frankstown Avenue, where you can now find a YWCA, and on Braddock Avenue, where you can find the UPMC Resolve Crisis Center. Once again today, Just Harvest stands here to remind council that government needs to use its authority to support low-income people's access to food rather than injure it. The project that this zoning would enable involves demolishing a supermarket and replacing it with one about two-thirds the size. According to charts presented by Giant Eagle at a public meeting in September, inside that smaller space, Giant Eagle would add beer and wine sales, bar seating for 18, cafe seating for 44, and a Starbucks. In contrast, retail floor space for fresh produce would shrink by 15%. Furthermore, the proposed development would leave these communities without a supermarket for an estimated 18 to 24 months until the new store reopens. During that time, it is essential that Giant Eagle and Echo Realty provide community residents with a viable zero-cost transportation solution that will preserve their ability to do their grocery shopping. The City Council, in general, should deny zoning changes that reduce access to good, healthy food. In this particular case, the council should insist on specific commitments to preserving the healthy food floor space of the new store and an interim grocery transportation access solution as conditions of any future zoning approval. Nearly 5,000 households in the 15206 and 15208 ZIP codes currently rely on food stamps, and roughly 400 WIC recipient families depend on this store as the only viable place to obtain the high-nutrition foods provided by the WIC program. Just Harvest stands in solidarity today with our allies in the movements for equitable development, affordable housing, sensible and sustainable mass transit solutions. We support the conditions that they also advocate today as a prerequisite for action by City Council. Section 922.05.F of the zoning code provides that one of the criteria for the review of proposed zoning amendments is, quote, "the convenience and welfare of the public." The public is counting on you today to protect and defend their convenience and welfare by postponing action on this amendment until and unless those conditions are met to ensure real benefits to the broader community. Thirty years on, it's about time.
Thank you. Ken? Mr. Regal, can I ask you to leave your comments with the clerk? Would you be willing to do that?
Yes, once I have a good hard copy.
Thank you. I appreciate it. Thank you very much. John, welcome.
Thank you.
You'll be followed by Richard Wilson.
My name is John George. I live at 100 Denniston, townhouse number 80, so we also face the wall of Giant Eagle. Prior to that, we've lived in Shadyside for the past 20 to 25 years on the other end. So I moved to the Village of Shadyside in April, just in time for this to occur. We're not opposed to the development, and I'm going to try to be as little repetitive as possible. We're not opposed. We understand that Shadyside and East Liberty are both commercial and residential areas. That's one of the reasons why we live there. We like that. What we are concerned about is that this is a border property. The transition from commercial to residential occurs there, and so we're concerned about the size, as you've heard, the height of the buildings. Mr. Bishop made two very good points during his presentation. He said that this would be a transit-oriented design, and we should look at the whole, the area as a whole. I agree with him. This should be a transit-oriented design, and as such, we shouldn't be looking at a parking garage as large as it is. Secondly, we should be looking at the area as a whole. There's been a lot of development, both apartment and commercial, and I think we need to look at not only what's been developed, but what's being proposed to be developed before we go too far into the number of apartment units and the number of parking spaces. There are a lot of units that have been built, and there's a lot of existing residential units that existed long before the, this redevelopment. So my concern is that we, we look at the area as a whole, and before we, we approve this zoning change, if we should approve it at all, we look at the fact that it is a transitional area and the fact that the heights and density of this development may not be appropriate to this area. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, John. Hi, Richard. You'll be followed by Scott Bricker.
Richard Wilson, 100 Denniston, townhome number 50. Until recently, my neighbors and I could step outside and look to the night sky to see the moon and perhaps a few stars above our roofs. Now, there's only the eerie pink and blue lights atop the office building where the old Reisenstein Middle School used to be. Even more recently, we watch 129-foot-tall, nine-story office building taking shape, some 600 feet from our homes. It looms over our homes when viewed from the corner of Shady Avenue and Aurelia Street, nearly half a mile away. This building, as you know, is the result of a consent decree between the city and Walnut Capital reversing the zoning board's denial of a three-story height variance, partially in return for $245,000 in so-called "givebacks," including a new scoreboard for the baseball diamond in Mellon Park. Now Echo Realty proposes to build a 77-foot-tall, six-story building barely 200 feet away from our homes on Aurelia Street. We are increasingly surrounded by skyscrapers, an island of small one- and two-family homes in a sea of behemoth buildings. We know it's tempting to label us as "not-in-my-backyard" types. Some may be easily drawn to dismiss us as such, but they would be wrong. We welcome retail and residential development, and with others here, we favor affordable housing, whether it's 15% as Echo has proposed or 30% or more as some here have asked. What we oppose is exceeding the legally permitted building height and the unnecessary addition of 500 parking spaces, where the average vehicle volume in our neighborhood has nearly doubled in the last seven years alone, from less than 14,000 vehicles per day to more than 24,000 vehicles per day. Echo asks if the UNC rezoning of this site permits its proposed six-story building. It does not. Echo's UNC zoning at this site permits a four-story structure to a maximum of 60 feet. Yet Echo says that it will seek a special exception and then a variance from the zoning board of adjustment. The zoning law clearly prohibits the variance. It sets out five conditions, all of which must be met for a variance to be granted, and Echo can't meet any of them. It must show that it faces physical hardships which require that it exceeds the height limit to make reasonable use of the property. Now, there are many ways to profit from this perfectly level, five-acre site, especially with $1,800 a month apartment rents. So why are we so concerned if the law prohibits this? Because we fear that Echo will say that their affordable housing pledge depends upon building higher than is allowed by the zoning code, so that in the interests of greater housing equity in the city, the city should allow them to do the call.
Richard, you're not going to overspeak me. Your time has expired. Just a very friendly reminder, please, please don't make me have to say you have to relinquish the podium, okay? Thank you. Scott, you're next, and you will be followed by Schwane Uber. Hi, Scott, welcome.
Hi, Scott Bricker, East Liberty. Thank you for the opportunity to give testimony regarding this Shakespeare Street Giant Eagle development. I'm representing Bike Pittsburgh. We're a nonprofit with more than 3,000 members whose mission is transforming our streets to make biking and walking commonplace for all Pittsburghers in order to improve our quality of life and reduce the harmful effects of car dependence in our communities. We envision a Pittsburgh where people can thrive without needing to own a car. We believe the city's parking code is outdated. As a result, our mandatory minimum parking requirements, far too much expensive structure parking has been built in the city and is underutilized. The cost of building parking contributes to affordability issues and induces demand for people to drive, which in turns makes our streets more congested, less safe, and our air more polluted. With affordability, congestion, traffic safety, air quality, and climate change becoming more pressing issues in Pittsburgh, we believe this development could be a model for equitable development if adjustments remain to the plans. We support a development on the land that greatly reduces the amount of car parking and repurposes those dollars for a greater percentage of affordable housing, transit access, and better bicycle and pedestrian facilities. The result will be a development that is a true benefit to the community, a development that does a better job housing Pittsburghers and preserves healthy food access for those of us who are finding it harder to find affordable places to live and shop. One that is safer and more welcoming for people walking and biking, one that embraces its prime location served by some of the best transit access in the city, and one that addresses problems of our poor air quality, climate change, congestion, and congestion, which cars are a major contributor. My request is to delay action on this vote. Thank you.
Okay, Scott, thank you. Okay, Ms. Uber, followed by Georgia Burner. Welcome. Thanks for being here.
Hi, everyone. I know you've heard most of this before. We have an affordable housing crisis in this city. Crises require swift and sweeping action. Instead, we seem to be resigned to piecemeal efforts that often do far too little and arrive far too late to have the impact that is required to address these issues. Some neighborhoods in the city have been hit harder by this crisis than others, perhaps none more so than East Liberty. Development of luxury housing in this city goes on almost completely unchecked, and the race to develop every remaining plot of land in East Liberty has resulted in the mass displacement of much of those who formerly made East Liberty what it was. Every day, Pittsburgh loses, on average, three Black residents. Former East Liberty residents make up a large portion of those displaced. I grew up in this area. This was my Giant Eagle growing up. I went to the school, Florence Reisenstein Middle School, which was torn down to make way for the first of what would be seemingly endless luxury apartment buildings, built and designed for new Pittsburghers and at the expense of those who lived and studied there. I still remember the smell of vanilla wafer days. I remember them closing down the Gallery on Center to open up a New Market District. I remember them shutting down the Food Land over on Braddock. This is still my Giant Eagle. While this is a seemingly mundane issue, changing the zoning designations of these plots, today is the best time to demand better, to demand more. We are asking that you delay the vote to approve this zoning change until the developer, Echo Realty, agrees to meet the community's demands in the form of an enforceable community benefits agreement and to help, at least to a small extent, address the crisis. Now is the time to act, because now is the last point at which we still have real and actual leverage. We need a completely different model for transit-oriented development to tackle this issue. Truly affordable housing, at scale, near transit centers, free passes for residents, less parking and fewer cars, which results in lower emissions and lower levels of traffic, which everyone is concerned about, greater accessibility for residents and community members to the busway, and development that takes into account the cultural needs and demands of the neighborhood and community members, preserving the heritage and access to food and basic necessities. We cannot wait for either Washington or Harrisburg to save us. We must do our part to tackle the climate crisis, the housing crisis, and the food and transit crises at a local level. This development is a near ideal opportunity to bring this vision into reality. We have the tools, and we have the funds to do so. Let's start here, and let's start today. Thanks.
Thanks, Schwane. Thank you. Hi, Georgia.
Hi.
Welcome.
Thank you.
Nice to see you.
Nice to see you. Nice to be here. I am Georgia Burner, and I live at number one Aurelia Street, ground zero, so to speak. I'm a member of the Concerned Citizens of East Liberty, Concerned Citizens of the East End, excuse me. And I want to thank you all for listening to us today. We all recognize that Echo Realty has the right to develop their property and to financially increase what they are doing, and we recognize that zoning laws provide a necessary function. The purpose of zoning is to promote the health, safety, morale, and general welfare of the community, to protect and conserve the value of the buildings, and to encourage the most appropriate use of the land. This property is at the center of a neighborhood, of a number of neighborhoods, that are pricing themselves out of reach of many citizen, city residents, a city where housing that families and families with children can no longer afford to live in. The property owners propose a building that is not in keeping with the surrounding neighborhood. You can walk, bicycle, or drive the streets here, from Washington Boulevard to the campuses of Pitt and CMU, and you will be walking in safe, open, homey neighborhoods. Three stories high is sufficient for this neighborhood. Any higher than that cuts off daylight, harms the openness and the sense of community that residents have. Tall buildings do not fit livable, safe, walkable communities with trees and daylight. It's like building a bookend. We have a bookend at Bakery Square. We're going to be the other bookend, the other end. That's just plain wrong. To add insult to injury would be an increase in the density in the population in the region. There has yet to be a traffic study, it's my understanding. Pedestrians are already endangered crossing in the, at those intersections. It is, it's not safe now. It's not going to be safe when we put a lot more people there. There's an opportunity here to make this a win-win for everyone, for all the communities, to also make it, to eliminate the food desert that exists, and for Giant Eagle, Echo Realty, and the citizens of these neighborhoods to work together to create something that works for everyone. I, excuse me, I urge you to deny the UNC zoning and to get a development of a signed community benefit agreement that we could all work together on and work together from. Thank you.
Thank you, Georgia. Andrew Bloomgarden, are you here? You are. Andrew, welcome. And you'll be followed by Naisha Johnson.
Okay. Hi, my name is Andrew Bloomgarden. I've been a resident of Shadyside for five years. I'm here with Shadyside Complete Streets to urge you to approve this project after a community benefits agreement has been reached between the developer and the community. Specifically, I hope to see that the agreement encourages the construction of safer streets, encourages transit use by reducing onsite parking and providing bus passes to residents, contains lots of, lots of affordable housing to ensure that the development builds the neighborhood up for all, not for some. All told, I'm supportive of the development, allowing more people to live and work in my neighborhood, and I believe that we, the community, can come to an agreement with the developer on any small gaps that we have, and I would like your support in getting us there. Thank you.
Okay. Thanks, Andrew. Okay, did I say it correctly? Naisha Johnson? Are you with us? Okay. How about Renell?
neighborhood, and I believe that we, the community, can come to an agreement with the developer on any small gaps that we have, and I would like your support in getting us there. Thank you.
Okay, thanks, Andrew. Okay, did I say correctly, Naisha Johnson? Are you with us? Okay, how about Renell Guy? I know you're here, Renell, I saw you. There you are. And you'll be followed by Karen Gilliam. Hi, Renell, welcome.
So, I'm Renell Guy. I live at 2317 Oscar Street, 15214. I know that it's hard for you to both embrace your privilege and sympathize with the economically disadvantaged. The group that is bearing the brunt of the gentrification that you're allowing to take over our neighborhoods and communities are not the people that you think they are. There are elderly, there are artists, there are young moms with children. You, by not understanding or playing the whole tape out, you keep making ridiculous development decisions that harm the community. And we want to make sure that things that are thrown in our neighborhood work for our neighborhood, and we have a right to do that, and you are supposed to be representing us, not the greedy developers. They don't vote for you, we vote for you. Now, they financial campaigns, now they financial campaigns, but when, especially you and Daniel, you keep allowing all these other people to come in, who do you think is going to vote for you? Ain't nobody going to vote for you, beige butt. You know, these people ain't going to vote for you, real talk. So you keep moving us out, gentrifying the neighborhoods, and who's going to be left to support you? We're asking you to support us for years and years. You know, Giant Eagle has made money off of hundreds of thousands of black purchases in that store, and a good community partner gives back. A good community partner understands the city's crises, and right now, we're having a crisis of affordability, and you guys owe us. Everybody that was displaced over the last 20 years in East Liberty was promised the right to return. You sat up there, you and a couple others, and promised people that they would have a right to return, and this is an opportunity to at least get 70 of our East Liberty residents back into the community.
Thanks, Renell. Okay, Karen, are you with us?
No.
Okay, Lisa Gonzalez. Nope, okay. How about Athia Sims?
That's Alethea.
Alethea, welcome, thank you.
President of the Coalition of Organized Residents of East Liberty and a lifelong resident of the Ninth Council District. The organization that I chair, Coalition of Organized Residents Corps, was formed by the residents who were the victims of that East Liberty plan that was referenced to earlier on. I've watched homes that my friends, my neighbors could afford disappear with no replacement in sight. I have watched in my lifetime Giant Eagles disappear from neighborhoods where I've lived with nothing replaced. I am very concerned about any plans, any decisions that are made such as the zoning change that's not going to benefit people who are impacted the most. I can remember talking at some of the stakeholder meetings, saying, you know, they were saying to us, "Look at the big picture." I see the big picture. We saw ourselves cropped out of the big picture. There's nowhere to go. Instead of a parking garage, maybe a homeless shelter because there's going to be more and more people who are going to need that then, unless they're going to live in their cars, but don't agree to anything unless it's going to help people. Giant Eagle, I don't know if it's called OK Groceries anymore or not, they got enough. They got enough, they can support themselves, their families for generations. Let's worry about the community at large now. Let's concern ourselves with the people. Let's see something in writing that's going to benefit people, then talk about the zoning change. Let's talk about more housing. I don't say affordable because, let's face it, somebody can afford Bakery Square, just not me. Let's see people who need housing that they can afford move in. Let's see, we don't need a liquor store or restaurant since that's going to be in the Shadyside Commercial Street. Let's make it, make sure that the food...
Thanks, Alethea.
Sure.
Appreciate it, thank you. Carmen, you're next, please, and you'll be followed by our last registered speaker, who is Dawn Plummer.
Hi, Carmen, welcome.
Good evening, everybody. Just wanted to say, my name is Carmen Brown, and I'm representing today PPSA, which is Pinpoint Support and Action Coalition. And yesterday, we had a meeting, and we were just talking about some of the things that we have, that just came up about this development. And so, you know, the conclusion that we came up with, that, you know, we're, the way the development looks right now, there's, there's a lot of problems with it, and we just can't support it. We, we, we can't support it the way it is right now, and, you know, especially with the zoning part of it, hopefully the zoning doesn't pass, and I do agree with some of the Shadyside people over here, you know, some of the things they were saying. But again, you know, we, you know, we have that Giant Eagle for so long, you know, it's, it's like an icon in our community, and, you know, we have people that are disabled, we have, you know, people that, that depend on that for WIC, so, and it's just, you know, we, we don't see any way that this can fit, it just can't fit with the people that we represent. So, I know, Erica, you've been working real hard, I mean, you have talked, you have had a lot of conversations with us, I can say that. I mean, some of them have been productive, and some of them we're still trying to figure out, so, but right now, again, like I said, is that, you know, we, we can't support this. Like I said, this is, this is, it's, we don't, we don't see any housing that we can, that would be conducive to our people that we represent, so, you know, there still has to be a lot of talks with this, but at this particular time, you know, we just, we just can't, you know, support it. So, thank you.
Thank you, Carmen. Hey, hi, Dawn, welcome.
My name is Dawn Plummer, and I'm here both as the Executive Director of the Pittsburgh Food Policy Council, as well as a resident of the Point Breeze neighborhood. I live a mile and a half from this proposed, or from this site. First, in terms of the Pittsburgh Food Policy Council, we work to build a just, equitable, and sustainable food system. We have over 80 member entities that work on issues like hunger, emergency food, grocers, food businesses, et cetera. And just to kind of, you know, remind us of the conversation we've been hearing about gentrification and displacement, we're also talking about the displacement of people of color, African-American-owned businesses in the East Liberty, particularly food businesses area as well. So, there's obviously a very tense and, you know, not a great history here, and so I think that this development really gives us an opportunity to cut a new way forward, and I think that it's a real intersection of, you know, as the sign says, transit justice, food justice, housing justice. And as representatives of the public, you have the important role and duty to meet the needs of your residents that you represent, and particularly those who are most vulnerable, the low-income, disabled parents, children. As a resident and someone who passes this area every single day, I've actually tried to walk. It's the path, my path to work. I've tried to walk to work. I've tried to, thought about biking my son that same path, but you can't actually, the air is actually toxic, it's not a healthy route. And I would say in terms of the trans, in terms of the bus stop, and who is, is using the Giant Eagle the most, if you pass that street every day, you see a really over, a brimming bus stop that doesn't have enough seating for people who are not able to stand. They have their own, they use a shopping cart to help stand. We have young mothers with children who this isn't an inconvenience to go to a different grocery store for 18 months, this would actually be a, impossible. So I want to just say that we really need to lock in that community benefits agreement before we move any further with this process and look at the food justice questions.
Our list of registered speakers is exhausted. If there is anyone in council chambers that wishes to address council, you're welcome to do so, come up to the podium. Unfortunately, you're only granted one minute. I hope that will mean that you'll register in the, in the future so that we can give you fully a lot of time. Welcome, thanks for being here.
Hi, my name is Joe Pascoletti. I've lived in Shadyside for two years now. This year, I've been car-free for three seasons, and I use public transit on cold days like today. I would like to see fewer parking requirements in Shadyside. My understanding is there's a requirement of one parking space per housing unit. I think that's too high. We can have a wonderful neighborhood with sunlight and trees, it's fully walkable, that has mixed-use businesses for everybody, that doesn't have quite so many cars, and that improves safety by, we can reduce vehicle speeds to improve safety, we can reduce congestion to improve safety. And so, I would like to see an emphasis on public transit and alternative transit such as protected bike lanes. We know from the mistakes of other cities across the nation that adding cars only creates congestion and chokes out neighborhoods. So we need to rebuild our roads for safety, accessibility, and affordability, and I don't see that emphasis yet.
Okay, thank you very much. Hi, welcome.
Hi, my name is Lea Nicola Chenkin, and I've been living in Shadyside for over five years. I'm here on behalf of Shadyside Complete Streets, which is a community group that advocates for safe walking, biking, and transit in Shadyside. Our group is generally in favor of seeing this site redeveloped. We're happy to see more housing. High-density transit accessible housing makes our community safer and is good for the environment, as everybody said. However, like others, we're concerned that the current plan will not do that. We're particularly worried about the amount of parking being planned for the site and that it be developed with a proper pedestrian and transit orientation. Our group asks that City Council postpone the vote on the zoning change pending the community benefits agreement between the developer and affected community groups addressing reductions in parking, increased affordable housing, and a safe streetscape. Thank you.
Thank you. Hi, welcome.
Hi, my name is Laura Perkins, and I live in Highland Park. I was born in East Liberty. I just wanted to mention two things, reiterate a lot of things that were said. Who here has had to go shopping on WIC? I'm specifically asking the people in front of me. It's not easy. Thank you, good. So you know the challenges involved in that, and having to travel a lot farther for potentially two years is unacceptable, and we need to consider that in the, in the negotiations. Secondly, I wanted to quote Nora Liu of the Government Alliance on Race and Equity. "If an area is rezoned, it needs to be done with parallel strategies to strengthen communities so that people in the community can thrive in place." And I really wanted to emphasize those last two words, "in place." So many people have been displaced in this area, I've been seeing it through the years, and currently, the amount of affordable, I'm using air quotes, apartments and residences in this plan, that's not enough. It's simply not enough, and we need to think of what's right and what's wrong, and we need, yeah, thank you.
Thank you. Hi, that's okay, you can go ahead, we'll let Karen get settled, and we'll bring her up.
Okay. Hi, my name is Jay Walker. I live in Shadyside, District Eight, and I'm a member of Shadyside Complete Streets. I shop at the Shakespeare Giant Eagle, I take buses to and from the East Liberty Station, and I also take a lot of buses to and from other stops in the area. I'm asking that you delay the vote on this zoning change until you get a community benefits agreement in writing, and I hope that you, in this agreement, can reduce the amount of parking, and that's part of the plan. Parking is oversupplied in my neighborhood, and it looks like this plan is going to contribute to that oversupply. It would also be great if you could provide transit passes for those who live in the neighborhood, and those who live in the development specifically, because developments next to transit should encourage lots of transit use, but as we see from East Liberty Bond, that doesn't always happen, and we hope, I hope that providing passes will make, the finances make a lot more sense. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Hi, Karen Gilliam. Karen, we can bring a microphone to you if that would be helpful. Would you, we can bring a microphone to you if that would be helpful. Karen was registered, she just wasn't here. Hi, welcome.
Good afternoon. I am Karen Gilliam, Tenet Council President of Orco Tenants. I'm saying no to the idea of, it's going to inconvenience a lot of people. Okay, and then we, we, there's a question about WIC. How, how are they going to get their WIC? And the traffic's already a mess, but I would like to see you see about the people instead of all of this land grabbing and, and illegal stuff going on. You know, we need a place, too. You know, and we got young, young mothers and, surprisingly enough, and young fathers who are taking over the role of being single parents to anywhere from one to five or six kids, you know, and we got the elderly, that's what Homewood is mainly made up of, the elderly and the young people. I don't see where it would benefit any of us to do it your way. You know, everybody's, you know, looking out for themselves, they're not looking out for the people. You're holding an office that is supposed to be for the people, but it's not happening. Okay, and I don't know what the answer is, except for the fact, Mr. Burgess, if you want to be a developer, be a developer. Step down and let somebody else take over the role.
Okay, thank you, Karen. Okay, okay. So, that exhausts our speakers for this public hearing. I will open it up to council members if they wish.
Do they have the invitation to meet each other?
I'm, I'm sorry?
Is there a phone number to meet each other?
Yes, yes, please, but I gave the invite, so please come up. Okay, yep.
Okay. Hello, my name is Rachel Clancy. I'm a resident of Garfield, and my grandparents actually grew up in East Liberty, and one day would tell me the history of Pittsburgh, they would tell me about the rich legacy of the Hill District, and then they would talk about how it was raised to clear slums and support the development of the commercial interests. And then my grandma would talk about how those residents were displaced to East Liberty, and shortly after they moved there, we then saw urban renewal destroy the neighborhood. We saw periods of social and economic disinvestment in the flight of capital out of the city, so the flight of industry and jobs, but also white flight as well. And with the flight of white residents, won the flight of food stores as well, grocery stores, so you had the creation of a food desert, essentially. And now what we're seeing is, after decades of social and economic devaluation and disinvestment, profitable reinvestment on the part of Echo Realty. So I tell you this because gentrification is an extension of urban renewal, it's an extension of...
Thank you, thank you.
The racist housing companies...
It's one minute, it's, your time is up.
The least you can do. The least you can do is honor the CBA.
And you can leave your remarks if you wish. Okay, okay. So, last call. Okay, all right, we're good. I'm going to close the public comment portion of the council meeting. I am going to open up to council members if they wish to comment, and I'll start with Councilwoman Strasburger.
Thank you, Council President. Please excuse my voice. I'm glad to be listening, because clearly, I've been doing too much talking. First of all, I want to thank you all for being here today and taking time out of your schedule. It takes a lot to come down in the middle of the afternoon to say some remarks on an issue that you care deeply about, that speaks volumes that you're here today. Second, I want to say that I'm proud of the process that we've had up until now. We're still in the very, I would say, the beginning of this process, even though it's been long so far. But we've brought communities together, from Shadyside, East Liberty, Larimer, Homewood, and other communities as well, to ask questions and get some answers. I think the good news is, we, I believe, what I heard was that there's at least one thing that all of us can agree on, and that is that the current use of this land is not the best use, that it can be better, and that it should be developed in some fashion, redeveloped in some way or some form. But clearly, there are a number of issues that continue, that need to be addressed. Among them, that I heard today, and that I've been aware of for some time, height, parking, complete streets, housing access, food access during construction and after. And these would generally be issues that would be attached as perhaps conditions on a different part of the process, maybe not during a rezoning of the land underneath a development, because there's a rezoning that has to do, has nothing to do with, generally has nothing to do with the development on top of it. But I understand that this is, this rezoning question is inextricably linked to the proposed development that's going to go on top of it. So, the two in that way are linked, even if by process, they shouldn't necessarily be. And because I hear that your answers and your concerns, your questions have not been answered, and your concerns have not yet been addressed, I'm going to call for a delay of the vote until we can all come together and define what community means, define the community, bring that community together, and get some real answers to the questions that were raised today. And I think that we've had some good conversations up until this point, but we need to continue the conversation until a vote occurs.
Yep, thanks, Councilwoman. Councilwoman Burgess.
So, I am, say a few things. I'm exactly what I want to be, and I'm exactly what I am. And grateful to be that for at least the next four years, if my health continues. I will, first of all, I want to use this as a teaching moment. First of all, as all of us, Dawn, we have been bringing more units to East Liberty. There's a nine percent deal that was approved, where the old Urban Academy, Urban League's Char School used to be, that's going to be a completely affordable development. We're going to build new housing on Beatty Street, that's going to be a mixed-income development deal. There are two projects that have the same name, Melon Orchards One and Melon Orchards Two. Both of them will bring a significant amount of affordable housing to East Liberty. And the third, and the third, I understand when people are in pain, they cannot help but express their pain even when it's inappropriate. And I pray for them, and I understand, I'm sorry they're in pain, but I won't be inappropriate to them, even though they are often inappropriate to me. And so, I will use this as a teaching moment to explain something and go forward. In terms of the community benefits agreement that I've heard, and I've heard people talking about this, I want to at least share with you when that's appropriate in my mind. There are one of three times a community benefit agreement is appropriate. When either you have public land, when you have public financing, or the entity itself has some, is a public institution. When either you have public land, public financing, or the entity itself is a public institution, then a community development, a community benefits agreement is certainly in place. Public land, public dollars, or the entity itself that's doing the development is a public institution of some sort, like an authority of some sort. So, if the airport authority, or the URA, or any authority does some project, certainly it's appropriate to have that conversation. For those things that are not that, one of the reasons that we have the Affordable Housing Task Force was we said that this is, for those things that are not that, right, when private institutions, private developers, on private land with private money, when they decide to do something, we sat as a community and said, as a government, this is the guidepost, right? If you're doing something, here's what we prefer you to do. We can't make you do it, but we would prefer you to add fifteen percent affordable housing into every development. If we had done that fifteen years ago, we would probably not have, or maybe fifteen, about fifteen years ago, if we had done that fifteen years ago, we probably would have very little affordable housing crisis, because if you go in Strip District, if you go to Bloomfield, and you go to Lawrenceville, all of those developments, many of them that are completely market-rate, and even East Liberty, many of those market-rate units would have fifteen percent of affordable housing, and we would not have this issue. I would simply say, and I understand the emotions, and I will continue to use this as a teaching time. Unfortunately, unfortunately, every project is not designed, every project does not get everyone all of their wishes. It just doesn't work that way. But what we should be doing is finding multiple projects over a length of time so that more needs get met. One of the conversations we need to have, that we should be having, is why not put a grocery store and economic development in a new business district in Homewood? Why not, why not, we can broaden the conversation, there are other things we need to do. Now, I am, I am, and, 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 and so, I also think, I also think, I also think that, I also think that having affordable housing on that site will benefit residents who live there. I am, I, I, I am not in favor, have not been in favor, of either extreme. I am not in favor of straight market-rate things. I am also not in favor of straight affordable housing projects. I think both are bad. I think both are...
All right, all right. Freedom of speech is not freedom of conduct. Everyone was respectful when you came to speak. I only ask that everyone remain respectful, as everyone has an opportunity to speak.
It's okay. My community, obviously, my community, obviously, is in pain. And so, at every opportunity they have, they need to express that pain. I understand it. I understand that.
Okay, all right.
It's okay, no reason. I will, I will, but I will be, I will be with Erica.
This is not helpful.
I will be with Erica as she moves forward. I have shared with you sort of my thinking, and hopefully, it made some sense.
Okay, so, if, can I have my turn before you leave, please? Okay, so, Councilwoman Strasburger and I have discussed this at length, and I'm not surprised to hear her called to hold the vote, and I will absolutely support her in that. We share a lot of the same concerns. I, too, I wish, kind of wish Councilwoman Gross had been able to attend today. I think this council as a whole has genuine concerns about parking requirement and development. We're not sure exactly what form that may take as we begin to discuss that, but I have to agree with a number of people that spoke here today about build it and they will come. Parking does not relieve congestion, I think it only further exacerbates congestion. And so, I heard a lot of, I was quite surprised to hear that there were four hundred and ninety-two proposed parking spaces. I hope that was a correct number. The height continues throughout the city of Pittsburgh, height continues to cause me concern. We have a number of projects taking place on Forbes Avenue Corridor that have made application through, for relief through the zoning board. And with each development, the height seems to increase more and more and more, and I think that's a dangerous precedent to set. I fully appreciate development, given the guidelines by which we set within our zoning code. I do believe hardship needs to be proven to show the need for relief, but I have genuine concern around the, not just the proposed height of this project, I don't want to get down there, I want to talk bigger picture, development throughout the city in general. But I felt the most stunning remark really came from Mr. Regal, and that's why I asked you if you would leave your remarks. It seems to me that you did your homework in terms of what the Giant Eagle is proposing to build when they, if and when they do rebuild, and I thought it was quite interesting that things like healthy produce was being sacrificed for bar stools, if, and I'm only going to offer what I was told at the meeting, but if that is indeed the case, and I appreciate development has to understand a new customer base, what it is that they need to provide as amenities, but if we are trading off what we all believe really to be important in terms of conquering food desert, then it makes me question, what market are you really looking to serve? Right? So, that just sort of came to mind. Anyway, we will continue to have this conversation. You have a very thoughtful council here, you have a council that generally does, I know, I hate to, the word politicians, but elected officials tend to get a bad rap. But believe it or not, you actually do have a council here that is generally concerned about the health and safety, welfare of the people that we represent, and we take this seriously, and will continue to debate this. I will support the councilwoman in not bringing this to the table for a vote as we continue to bang this out, and it won't be the first time we've done this, it won't be the last time we've done this. But we will continue this discussion till we can get a plan that all can agree on. Okay, thank you. All right. And I'm going to close with this. You know, sometimes I might let myself get the better of me in a public hearing, and I know there's a lot of emotion in the room, and people bring their passion, and we appreciate that people bring their passion to the room. And I don't ever mean to be disrespectful, ever. I only ask that when we gather like this, and this is truly my favorite thing that we actually get to do, is to interact directly with constituency in a very public arena, that we all remember that we just are respectful of one another, myself included, and that we conduct ourselves as such. So, thank you all for being here. May I have a motion to adjourn this public hearing?
So moved.